Uh.
Now, my veteran is a four hundred thousand dollar student loan, so don't complain about.
How we just.
They work really hard.
Little money.
Oh, is she in Maine?
Understand that.
It just.
You did? She went to.
Practicing in Maine. In one.
I like it, I like it.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Like those people are miserable.
Hey Greg.
So a lot of them. Doug, I think it's why they were lucky Pat now carries the rich both to Canada.
Can you hear us?
But she.
Because it's cheap.
It's not because it's cheaper, it's because they're.
Can you hear us right now?
Okay.
So.
Wasn't cheaper, much cheaper to go out.
It's such a.
I'm gonna do my best to get you on here so you can see people.
Right. When I do the.
I mean, even Greg, yeah.
So, yeah.
Remember the other one?
Just send me put you on this.
Yeah.
Watch order.
Yeah.
That's.
Is it?
You hear?
Yeah.
You hear me?
The only.
Yeah.
I don't have to say any others.
Big act. Yeah, I agree. Yeah. It's actually, you know, there's your.
Yeah.
Coming out wanting to do big act. Well, I mean, that's our point that can't find anybody to hire. Nobody wants to do it anymore.
Nobody can find anybody.
Really. Yeah, nobody, you know, our goat that went to work.
Yeah.
She became the state veterinarian, actually, we don't have a goat that.
We can't hire mechanics, we can't hire.
Can't hire. You know what? It's the housing. It's because the housing prices.
Can you hear us?
Been on your southern main.
I didn't really. I didn't know because of the COVID that it got really bad. That you were paying, you know, eighty five dollars.
Can you hear me, Greg?
So the distance. Why they were.
This is like.
Or.
We said.
I'm gonna sit over here with the computer, just make sure that's over.
Still pretty inexpensive, I know.
Do you want to sit?
So we're.
And we've got. We chairs.
We're.
Here's some supporting documents if anybody.
I just rented.
Double. I, I'm just double. Sixteen years ago.
It's so good.
Just a lucky though.
All that.
Everything. Does have to run up, John.
That's actually double stuff all by hours.
When did you buy your house?
Sixteen years ago, about these years ago. So, yeah, they did that one.
Talk to Tim.
I appreciate it.
I think what you're selling.
Not my fault. Right down.
You know, I'm one of those few people who like paying taxes. I get things for my taxes, I get Tim. I get an ATO, I get a police force, I get my pothole filled, I get a school system, I love paying taxes.
Alright.
Pay my.
Paul Elmo. They.
Want your mics or not?
Um, Greg, can you hear us okay? Can you hear us okay with all?
Are you only?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Yeah, Hershey, why don't you do something with any other thing? Um, are we expecting anyone else from the planning board bill or?
Greg, you.
We have another. Okay. Alright, yeah, we don't know. Okay. Um, thank you, uh, Greg, Hershey and Jenny for being available, asking to go through this and her all of the workup until the point. Um, so this is a workshop to work through the necessary ordinance changes as a result of LD two thousand three. Um, so I know the planning board has been partnering with SMPDC to come up with a number of required changes given the new law and that's essentially what we're here to discuss. Thank you for the memo, Greg. With the summary, I guess. This is a pretty hefty packet, I'm curious what everyone. Do we, I, I was sort of thinking that maybe we could have just like talk through a quick summary of each one of these seven changes. If I look at the, the cover page, we've got seven different changes and kind of high level talk through those, what is, what do you guys think? I'm, I'm totally open to suggestions on how we want to approach this.
I, you know, I, I'd be happy to do a quick rerun on, it's mostly about LD two thousand three, but it has three parts.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
It's state mandated, there's very little tweaking, as I remember that we're allowed to do without it.
Yeah.
Um, one is about ADUs, how many you can have, where they go. The only thing we changed was the size of it, that was the only lag that I think we had in terms of how we set it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the other part is wherever there's a single family house, you can have a. Come back to me here if I'm wrong, a duplex, a triplex, a quadriplex. And the third part is really that you can have bonuses if it's in a growth area of your town that has sewer and water. If you offer affordability, you can get as many as six units, you get like a, a one and a half times bonus. And I think that's the gist of LD two thousand three, did I get that right?
Close enough.
Okay, close, close enough. Um, and the, you know, we had to incorporate it into the zoning code, I think we basically just adopted what they had. Discuss through whatever we thought we were allowed to change or talk about and as I remember, the only thing was the size of the ADU. Is about all that came up that we had any say in.
Did we go up or down on that? Um, the ADU.
I, what was our original, the, the, the LD twenty three and the state of Maine in general says a hundred and ninety square feet is a minimum. And they had also allowed for, actually for tiny homes, I guess you could call it, previous to that anyway. So that was already a starting point, we didn't have a say in setting a minimum. We set a maximum that originally, I think our county works originally had a percentage of your square foot of your house.
Line, line nine on page, on the, the first page. Go to line nine, it'll show you what you're saying.
Oh, okay, thank you, John.
Yeah, so, um. Uh, the thirty percent. If you had a, a five thousand square foot house as opposed to a tiny cave, that means you're allowed an ADU that's almost the size of my house, right? And so that didn't seem to be exactly what we're aiming for with the idea of an ADU. It should look and feel and the purpose of it is not a second dwelling unit on your property. It really is accessory, whether it's over your garage or attached or even detached in a separate standing building, it is really not supposed to be another house. And so setting what felt like enough for a one, two, or even three bedroom apartment at seven hundred square foot. Felt like what an ADU should be. Some towns we looked at, um, basically scaled the percentage, so depending on the size of your house, the percentage changed, but it really achieved the same thing that you ended up with sort of what an ADU should be. Greg, you wanna weigh in on that?
Yeah, I mean, we looked at a whole host of issues, whole host of different alternatives, and this is probably the one topic that garnered the most conversation uh, and the most public input and really it also based in addition to what Hershey said. It also frankly became kind of an issue of fairness, uh, you know, if it was a percentage based approach. Someone with a small house could only do something very small, even if they had a larger garage, for example. Uh, so, uh, we also looked at the issue of fairness and thought that just putting a, uh, uh, a flat top number on there, uh, was fair to everybody.
Yeah, and I, I know that I think Ellen just done the same, I think they're six fifty or six seventy five or something close, and we did seven fifty and that just felt like, yeah, right, sort of in the right place.
So it's seven fifty across the board regardless of the house size.
Yep, and you know, don't forget, in a shed, you could put in a barn, you can put in all sorts of outbuildings that are not in fact regulated in quite the same way, so in that sense, you know, this is sort of, for some things a restriction, but you know, you have to do something, you have to some guideline, right?
It's an accessory dwelling unit, don't confuse that with the other allowed uses that LD two thousand three is now introducing for multiple homes, for example, on a particular, you know, one lot. So this is just an ADU specific.
I, I think, I think the other sticking point to point out is that the state mandated that you did not have to provide extra parking. And I think that will make this so difficult, there are people who definitely, I think we've heard, Jen has heard from, will want to put it in ADU who don't have a place to put parking. And that would mean they'd have to rent to somebody who either doesn't need it, um, and there isn't a way to park overnight. And so we're a little worried that that might sort of come up and be something else we'll need to think about, um. And you know, maybe in some places it doesn't, you know, live in the middle of nowhere, I don't care if you park overnight on the street that's really wide and unused and safe, then who knows, but.
Until winter.
Hmm?
Until winter, and then that doesn't.
Until winter, well, and you know, I, that's, that's up to the property owner to have to navigate what to do about that, but it doesn't, it doesn't increase your parking for, which is a little bit of a gimme, so.
I just had a quick question about the, so ironically enough, my house is actually seven hundred and fifty square feet, so. Does it feel okay? How's it feel? Um, I would really like another half bathroom, because even just with a husband and wife, you need more than just one bathroom.
I, oh, you definitely do.
Um, so literally, it's a bedroom, a living room, a kitchen, a bathroom and a small foyer, that's seven hundred and fifty square feet. So my question is, um, on the first page, line nine, where it says dwelling unit and apartment was crossed out. Does that mean these dwelling units are not rentable? The, and the reason I ask is if we go back to affordable housing, I was told if I wanted, I could probably get three thousand a month to rent my seven hundred and fifty square foot house, and that's not affordable housing to me, you know what I mean? So I was just curious as to why apartment was crossed out and dwelling unit was.
I, I think it's just.
Okay. Yeah, great.
Yeah.
So they're not called accessory apartments anymore, they're just called accessory dwelling units now to the state and to other surrounding towns as well. So it's really just a perfect thing.
Okay.
And it's updated in the definitions too, just apartment. Yes.
They are written.
So one ninety is updated in the definition, but it's not reflected, does it need to be like? It's not reflected where I'm. Like on line nine, like where, where you're spelling out the maximum, but you're not necessarily putting the minimum. We believe in the definitions, okay, and because it's.
Great, oh. Good, great. Yeah, great. Go ahead, Greg.
Yeah, uh, just wanted to add, we also, this goes back, we did have conversations about parking. Uh, the parking ordinance, uh, may need to be updated, I don't remember exactly what we call it, but it has areas in town that are listed. No on-street, no off-street, and more of the congested areas because this now becomes a right. We are aware from the public participation that there are people over in the Agamemnon area, uh, that are looking forward to doing this, so it could present problems down the road, particularly in winter. So that is something that you're going to need to keep an eye on, yet as far as the accessory dwelling unit goes, that just brings us into the same wording that the state law uses.
Uh, just for clarity, before we continue on, the, we arrived with a packet on our tables today, what exactly is that packet? Because it's forty something pages, um, but the, what we received from the planning board was something like thirty on, in September, so, um, is it the DJ stuff that's been shuffled into it all, is that what we're looking at?
No, I only sent you the amended changes, I think, when I, the, the thirty package we, we only got, Jenny sent me originally, I think was the that was, was that only the stoppage of change?
This packet right here that you have in front of you from, um, Dawn, she put together this packet. This is everything that the planning board had in their packets. It does include DJ's amendments that, um, were asked of him, it's all in here. But this is everything that the planning board went through, this is something that you should have received already, everything here.
Alright, so, so to be clear. Um, just so I have it in my head. But the town council was presented with none of the, the affordable housing stuff on, in September. And that's why I had asked my questions and I got, we, we got DJ's stuff. So I'm just trying to make sure that I know what we're talking about, because the planning board is telling me that they've looked at the affordable housing stuff, but that was not what the planning board presented to the council. So I want to make sure that I'm understanding that.
What page are you talking in reference to right now in your packet in front of you, is it in here?
What's that?
Is it in front of you right now?
What?
You're talking affordable housing?
And that's why I'm asking, what, what is in front of me right now?
So one forty-four.
Okay.
But, but, when you say affordable housing, you mean in relation to the LD two thousand three only, not anything else?
Uh, in relation to the, the ordinance changes that.
From the state.
Yeah, for two thousand three, yeah. That's all.
Yeah.
Like it's a blending, that's all, I'm just wanting to make sure that I'm looking, because I have notes on, on what I received in September from the planning board, I have notes on what I received from Lee J. It's all, and some of those were diff, were the same, but a third of it was different, was not included in the September packet, and now I get a new one, so I want to make sure we're talking the same stuff.
So we received the first pass from the planning board, you had feedback, we, that was related to Lee J. He responded back to us, that has been incorporated here, so this is like, oh, this is including the feedback from, this is the original stuff on the planning board, including the fe, feedback from Lee J, yes.
The packet you have that was copied, that, it looked like this in front of you. Came from Lee J, I emailed you a couple weeks ago. And has all the legal changes that you had requested of Lee J, the last conversation I had with Lee J last week was, it's done. It's ready to move forward. I cross-referenced with Phil Sosser and said, do we need to send it back to the planning board? Phil said, no, because I sent your changes over to Phil, all those changes only represented mostly legal requirements for the names and state law, so Phil, Phil was fine with just sending.
They were not.
Updating the date, was they were not substantial. We stand, we have that word, changing, it's been a long day, so this is just, this is the final draft from Phil, uh, from
Lee J.
We just, so the planning board gave us, let's say, hypothetically draft one, which I'd sent you in September.
Yeah.
You sent back, like Mallory said, those questions. Lee J sent everything back, this is actually, you know, draft, the final draft of the final thing.
Okay, that's all, I want to make sure that I was, as I'm following along, because I'm going to be going to that in my notes, I wanted to make sure I was that it was a truly blended version of what we've been receiving.
Also, Lee J, Lee J did all of that, so. Lee J, the last conversation I had with him, Jenny, you were there, you said, he said it was done.
Yeah, no, who did, I'm just trying to understand what, what Jeff's talking about, though. I, I'm just, I, I feel like maybe Hershey and I have been confused.
Well, I, I think there were, it sounds like there were several iterations that went back and forth, but when we received the final for us to review intensely, we had a version that basically incorporated each piece of LD two thousand three into our zone, everything, so, um, and that's what I think is before, isn't it?
Right, you know what I'm saying, is you can look on September twelve supporting documents, what was presented to the council, what was, what we were asked to either approve or send to workshop, did not have the affordable housing and did not have the quadplexes, and, and that's why I had questioned.
Okay.
And that's why I made my.
I know. I can't remember last.
So that's why.
Said something, maybe we did.
Why do we, if I could, can we focus on the content here? Because really, that's what we're here to talk about, is do we have all the content, when and how, and when we receive certain information, I think at this point is moot, let's focus on what the content is, and then get with it. Okay. Okay. Um, where, we didn't really get a consensus on kind of where we wanted to start, Hershey gave us a little bit of a summary, we talked about the ADU, which seems to be the biggest, um, point of debate, I guess, in this process, right? Um, what else do we want to dig into in more detail? I'm very much leaving it to you guys, what we want to do. Where do you guys have questions?
Alright, well, I'll just start.
Yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
Uh, line three, um, it has, uh, code enforcement officer shall approve the addition of one dwelling unit to, and moves on. One dwelling unit, as I read the, the law, I believe it's two ADUs that are allowed to be there. And I'm wondering why it's one dwelling unit, and I'm feeling like it's carryover from what was in the order, the last ordinance, so I feel like that's incorrect. Um, I don't know what you guys want me to do about it, I, I can reference the law, I can point it out, I can, but I'm not willing to just say I believe, Lee J, if what I'm saying, seeing looks different, I want to be so told that you're wrong, that, that's all. And I think it's under forty-three sixty-four dash A, dot, one, subsection one, where I saw that it says, um, um.
Uh, this is, I think, hard because we don't have copies of that.
Uh, you know, I, um, I think you might be right, I think it's that if you already have an AD, you're allowed another one, so you're right, you're allowed two. But if you don't already have one, I think you're only allowed one, one, so.
It doesn't.
This is why it's hard that Lee J and Hannah aren't in attendance.
Exactly.
Um, so, the thing that I feel like we need to understand here, we've done extensive research on, um, LD two thousand three, and it's three different buckets, right? So it's accessory dwelling units, it's affordable housing, and it's, you know, additional units. So is the question. I haven't seen anything on it, um, accessory dwelling units being allowed more than one per house, but we do get into the, um, oh, I can't even, I'm sorry. I was gonna Google it, but I can't fill in on this, I'm sorry. Um, but as you go further in, more dwelling units are allowed. So I guess it's a good question, Kelly, today.
Right, and I think that clarity, ADUs are different than the multiplexes.
Yes.
So it's like, don't even talk about the law, it's the ADUs, and, and that's why I wanted to make, that was one of the things that I was seeing, is like,
Yeah.
I don't want to have to keep coming back later, because we missed, there was supposed to be two instead of.
So my, my understanding of LD two thousand three, is, is it okay, Greg? Yes, yes, it's fine, you're, you're fine. So here's the deal, so every, every, across every zone that we allow housing in our town, we have to allow an ADU. Okay, state also says that people can put in ADUs in, we want them to come in front of the code enforcement. But it says if you put an ADU in anywhere in town and it's not governed by a building permit, there's nothing the town can do about it, have you read that in there? That's in there too. So anyone can put up an ADU and not come in front of the code enforcement office, not have all these inspections done that they need, so that's part of the state law. Okay, on top of that eighty, ADU, I can have one attached inside, I can have one attached, detached, right? So I can have it above my garage, I can have it in my house, I can have it in my basement, as long as I have the correct egress. I could also have a cottage outside of my lawn, you know, a hundred and ninety square feet that I could put up an ADU. With those ADUs, you also get allowed, you also have allowance for another housing unit. That housing unit has different standards than an ADU. So housing here in town right now, minimum square, uh, feet of a housing unit in.
So it was four.
So, well, I think what he's confused on is what I'm trying to explain now. So, let's just take your house, okay, you can put up an ADU in your house. You can also put an additional unit detached or attach your house if you want to, as a single standalone unit as well. And that, it goes in deeper inside the packet that you have in front of you. So you can have your house, you can have an ADU, and because you already have an existing unit on your property, you can then have a full another unit on your property. But that's not governed by the hundred and, you know, the minimum size of that is not a hundred and ninety square feet, it follows the guidelines of what we have here in town. Minimum size for any dwelling unit here in town today is six hundred square feet, you can't have anything less than that, and that's why you have the thirty percent of the two thousand, whatever, you do the calculations, it's six hundred square feet, that's the minimum. So you can have one ADU under LD two thousand three, so this is correct. But as you go forward, and we have, we have the document permit right here.
You're incorrect.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I, I, I'm, I'm saying I did that, that's incorrect.
So the, this is the, and this could be wrong, this is the SMPDC overview that they presented to us. And it does say, accessory dwelling units, you're, at least one must be allowed in any lot where housing is permitted and a single family house exists already. Right, and that's pretty much it, where it's located, zoning requirements. There's, and no additional parking, you have to follow the setbacks. A minimum one ninety square feet, and we set a seven fifty maximum, and then it talks about, you know, sewer and water. But I, so I don't, I don't know, maybe the SMPDC presentation got it wrong.
I think we're.
The actual.
That's why I'm, that's why I'm saying, we need to talk to and ask our planner to make sure that we're, that we're actually okay, if we're, if we're okay, and Lee J says yes.
Lee J's our planner.
I understand it, so where is he, he's not here, you know, and that's why I'm asking the question, because the question was brought up in the email that I sent before, and it wasn't addressed.
You're right.
And I'm asking it again.
So, so, so this part of it, at least that Jessica's brought up, the forty-three sixty-four dash A, that's about not accessory dwelling units, but dwelling units. And Jen, I think Jen is correct, that where you have a single family house, you're allowed two, three, or sometimes four. Right, houses, and you can still have an accessory dwelling unit, right? But that's, that's not.
Sorry, I want to give Greg a chance to jump in.
Thing is two accessory dwelling units. Hold on, here, hold on.
It looks like this, Tim. It is. I don't know if it's urgent, so. Greg, go ahead.
Thank you, that is addressed in the ordinance, uh, it's two different things going on here, one is the ADU and that line item three is properly worded, you gotta go to line one seventy-four uh, where it begins to talk about the additional residential dwellings, don't confuse those with the ADUs. That allows, uh, two, three, and sometimes four units, depending on the whether or not it's a vacant piece of land, so that's where the additional uh, homes, the full-blown homes come in, where you could have a vacant land, a, a, a lot, that means all the setback requirements, the dimensional standards, you could put up four single family homes. Whereas right now, you may only be able to put up one. So that addresses the two, three, uh, versus four dwelling units. And there's two, two very distinct things going on here, ADUs and the residential units. Two very different things. And why the code enforcement officer is approving the ADUs is because it's a right, and no, you know, the, the state said everyone can have one by right. Uh, so we opted, and I think we concurred with the approach of SMPDC to it should be a code enforcement approval, if it's a right, then let the code officer approve it, so I do believe in my view, Jeff, your question is answered.
So that way, so in theory, when I say I'm gonna build a house on block one, two, three. It's implied I can buy, I can build a house and accessory dwelling.
Yeah.
And then two thousand three said, and you get the section one.
And if you have a vacant lot, you can have up to four, yeah, so you just have to understand that it's three different buckets, LD two thousand three covers. Accessory dwelling, residential, affordable housing, you have three separate. Just. Because we keep referring to three buckets, so the accessory dwelling unit, we talked about, everyone gets one by right. Yeah. Yep, okay, that's, that's good. Then the other one is residential. Yep. And that is referring to the two to four, depending on if it's a vacant lot, size of your lot, whatever.
Water and sewer.
Water and sewer, okay.
That's right.
And then the third piece, the affordable housing, is where I'm struggling a little bit.
So often affordable housing in many towns is incentivized by allowing you more density, meaning you get to put in extra unit, even if you don't have sort of the, the right land ratio, right, you put in more units in order to do something good, right? So in this case, they give you, what is it, a one and a half, right, you get six units, up to six units if you agree to keep two of them affordable, basically a density bonus. You could reenacted one for their whole town before this, actually. Um, it's a, it's a great thing to think about overall, and now they've done it, and you have to have, it has to be in a growth area, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so it has to be in a designated area that has water, town water and sewer. Um, you get, oh, two and a half times the existing base density, so the base density is two. You can have two and a half times that, if it's four, you can have two and a half times that. Um, is that right, I think you get up to six those.
Yes.
And there's a three-year minimum, and let me just put out to affordability is not sixty percent area median income, in this case it's eighty percent. And they expect you to be able to spend thirty percent of your income on rent, is usually how you set affordable rents. And there has to be a deed restriction, I would assume, and someone who actually monitors it.
So if you do that math, it's thirteen eighty-four sixty-one a month. If you base it on twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two numbers for the median income of state made. Ballparking sixty thousand, thirteen eighty-four sixty-one.
Well, I personally call that affordable.
Is that eighty percent driven, that's driven by the law itself?
Yes.
Eighty percent versus sixty?
The eighty percent area median, what's the area median income, in Dover, it's eighty thousand dollars.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just questioning, so the, you said something about eighty percent versus like the normal of sixty, it could.
No, that's not, I'm talking about income in apartments.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's the affordability of apartments.
Right, so it's eighty percent of the, of the average, which is.
The hundred of the area median income, the hundred percent, so the hundred percent area median income is eighty thousand dollars, or let's say a hundred thousand, do the math. It would be eighty thousand dollars would be the, the income we needed to verify to have be in that unit. And then thirty percent of your income would be what we pay in right now.
Right, so if, if you do what the average is right now, it comes out down to fourteen hundred bucks a month for rent.
Yeah, well, that's why, that's why I think of affordable housing as six. Yeah, well, that's why, that's why I think of affordable housing as sixty percent area median income, but for this purpose, apparently it's not. Talk to your state manager.
Okay. Does, does that make more sense to you, Jeff?
It doesn't, I appreciate you guys dealing with me because I was not understanding why.
Well, that's why we're here, right?
Why we're here.
We found it confusing, we had it over several times, I have a lot of pictures.
So I presented a presentation to the planning board of all the rules and regulations before they even saw any of these documents. So they could understand what the law was and what we needed to do before we even did it. So that's why, you know, it's a little bit helpful, you know?
And I, I just wanna say, you know, I remember comments from the housing comp plan public meeting. Um, you know, everybody's a little freaked out in the end of it. You know, people like how single family housing, most of them maybe duplexes even. But when you get into triplexes, or quadruplexes, or four houses, people freak out a little. And you know, you could have a really nice looking quadruplex, you just have to design it well and demand that it look nice, right? There are some really ugly single-family houses out there in our town, I would say, and in every town. And it really just has to do with doing a good job. We certainly need more housing, we need more density, we need more affordability, and this is a great step forward.
So here's where I disagree, because I don't want, I moved here for that reason, as did a lot of other people in this town. And I just wanna put that on the table, that I did move here to have more houses on a house lot. That's not why I moved here, it's not why I stayed here.
But I think.
But we have to do it, it's the state saying we have to do it, so I understand.
No, do you have kids?
Yeah.
Yeah, do you want to be able to live in this town?
So no, no, we're, we're not, we're here to debate the, the law, we're, we're here to deal with our ordinance, we're not gonna debate our agreement with the law this evening, thank you.
I agree.
Okay. Um, what else? What other questions you got, Jeff?
Um, line four, uh, the, the, it says the additional unit is proposed to be attached or standalone on the property shall. I was confused as the wording, that's what, I'm just reading my notes.
Well, line everyone, what?
Line four.
Line four.
So, so what we're saying is, we all get, uh, we all get an ADU because we get, we have a house, we can have an ADU. This ordinance says you are now granted to have a second one. And then the wording says the additional unit is proposed to be attached or standalone on the property shall comply with the dim- dimensional standard, okay? I think it makes sense now, a little bit more.
This whole section, one forty dash forty-six dot one, this very first section is just referring to those ADUs that everyone gets the right to. That's all that's being talked about here, the additional stuff is elsewhere, this is just the first one.
Right, you can have a little standalone ADU, you can have an open garage, you can have attached to your house, it can be incorporated into part of your house even, that's all.
And then, um, continuing on, this, it says the dimensional standard must meet the dimensional standards of the chapter. Uh, the use must comply with the following standards, and then it lists them. My question is, are those the same as single-family unit standards? Because I believe, I, my belief was that we couldn't put more regulation. I thought it had to be, the ADUs had to be the same standard as a single-family unit, now is one of the questions I had. That question is clear, I'm not certain.
I, 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 I believe we're allowed to set a maximum size. Every, every town, it seems, has had, we have looked at a bunch of them, it seems like everybody is allowed to decide how big they get to be. There's already a minimum the state has put in, we get to decide how big they get to be.
Yeah, and that's only.
But I don't think that's what you're asking. I think you also referring to your dimensional requirements, meaning that I couldn't go and build, and maybe I'm wrong on this, but I couldn't go build a cottage five feet from the property line. It has to meet the dimensional requirements of the chapter, which is table B, uh, which is actually in the packet as well.
And that's.
Yep, so I couldn't build a cottage on your property line and say, I have renters on your property line, it's not allowed.
Right.
If that's your question.
Great. Which is already part of our ordinance, we're not, we don't allow a single-family home to be built right up on the, on the line.
Right, there's, there's setbacks still remain.
That's right.
Wherever they are in each zone remains the same.
It really just protects the neighbors, so that's the intention that.
I, I love that, because, yeah, it gets that all up in my backyard, but my neighbors are not gonna be happy to hear this, right?
Greg would like to speak, yeah, go ahead, Greg.
So some of the questions are already getting answered, and, you know, again, that other item, as we talk about those three items, the ADUs, the residential properties, and then the affordability aspect, or the density bonuses, the dimensional requirements, you, you, you can't just, if you have a three-acre parcel of land, you can't just go in and put up four homes. The dimension requirements may only allow you to do two, but you could do two if you could meet all of the requirements. So there's still those protections out there in residential zones or every other zone, that you can't be butting up against property lines and the setbacks, you still have to meet everything.
So the shape of my property line, the shape of the property could really impact how many you could do because of, okay, because of setbacks.
But you don't need to meet frontage requirements, so that's important to understand. You don't need double the frontage for an ADU, nope, and you don't need it now either. It's part of the notes.
Right, I got you.
Sorry.
And, you know, don't forget, like, I know someone who's moved into an ADU in their property because they can't really afford to live anymore, and they rented out their main house. And it's a great solution, especially for seniors who wanna downsize, remain in town, have in-laws who are seniors, have kids who don't live in the basement anymore, I mean, that's sort of the purpose of ADUs, they might get rented out. Um, one thing I will say is, we haven't talked about regulating Airbnb and short-term rental. But I don't think anybody in town would be thrilled to see like forty or fifty or sixty ADUs in their neighborhood, that are all gonna be short-term rentals. Um, and that's something to think about, and that is something you can regulate, right? So I would, I would jump on that.
So I just, um, just trying to be, like, we're literally talking about, like, Jeff's last question was on line four of a ginormous packet here. So can we try to keep our conversation focused on the words on the paper, so that we can all make sure we're in agreement with what needs to be here? Um, let's just start rolling through this, I feel like we're gonna be here till ten o'clock at the pace we're going. Um, okay, so Jeff, your last question was, um, where was it, line six, seven, nine-ish, what's next? Who's got our next question?
Just as a personal thing, in my mind, I, I'm not hundred percent bought into B, but I just want, we don't need to, we don't need to talk about it, it's in there, I'm fine with it. I feel like it's more restrictive, um, but, um, and then table, uh, then down on twenty-one, dimensional standards found in table B one. I know there are tables, I didn't see a table labeled B one. Um, and I assumed it was the new table that we're looking at, so I just wanted to bring that up as far as labeling the tables.
Can you tell me what line is on that one again?
All right, uh, twenty-one. Dimensional standards, um, table B one must be adhered to.
Maybe it's just table B, and not B one.
But we have a table B, that was why, that was where I confused.
Well, so, but I'm saying maybe that's just like a typo, it means just table B, it's all we have is a table B.
It's just be table B.
Yeah, yeah, so for all the dimensional requirements that are.
It's not even small.
Yeah, and, yeah, these are just table dimensional requirements, it's referring to the exact same thing, so this has gotta be a typo. Does everyone agree any, it's just table B?
Yeah.
Did you find the? Yeah, the tiny part of the packet.
That one is that way now.
Yeah, I got it.
Oh, yeah, I, I found the table B, and then I felt like there was an additional table that was submitted at the beginning, uh, on the, in September. That was sort of new, and they had. It actually said R one, R four, RS up on the top of it. But I'll plan that later, we'll get that.
That's table A.
Yeah. Table A is where we've got all the different zones. And like, as a result of these changes, we've added affordable housing development, we've modified accessory apartment, the accessory, sorry, accessory dwelling unit. Um, and then it looks like we've made some changes to, um, a few uses to make them a major site plan.
That was, it's been released in September, well, that's the one that I was like, was it table B one?
That's not table B one. I don't think that there is a table B one. I mean, the, the majority of this packet is definitions, many of which have been untouched, because they don't apply. And then, this is that table.
What?
That's good. You have the same.
Um, then, uh, twenty-seven just had apartment instead dwelling unit.
So you can fix that?
Yep.
Line twenty-eight through thirty. And actually, twenty-eight through thirty-two, I was wondering if that's more restrictive than the state law. Uh, where it ends up saying, in no dwelling that is served by onsite wastewater disposal system shall be modified to create an accessory apartment. And it goes on, and I, I, I was, I was just wondering if that.
That's state plumbing law.
What's that?
That's state plumbing law, so that's the uniform plumbing code. Um, if anyone has an ADU, um, if you apply for a subsurface wastewater disposal system, which is what you have if you don't have sewer, you have, it goes by bedrooms. So if you're adding additional bedrooms, you need to go back to a soil engineer, and they need to tell you if you need an expansion system or not, that has to stay in our ordinance, and it's been, that is untouched in our ordinance, it's been in there, it's proper.
And soil engineers also, um, in, in the, the law, it says site engineering farther into the ordinance. Site engineers mentioned, I wasn't sure if soil engineer is, was a title, or was more restrictive, you know? And that's why I wanted to be able to talk to you guys.
They're actually the same person, a soil evaluator and a soil engineer is the same.
Okay, so is it a problem for that site then? Since it's referenced as site engineer later in, in the ordinance?
Whatever you guys wanna do, I can answer that, but there's really, you don't have to.
I'm fine.
Every, everything you're talking about right now is gonna get picked up on what they call the H H E two hundred form, which starts the process for subsurface wastewater. And that's a, a two-part test, it goes to the state and the CEO.
Do we wanna just update anytime we're gonna refer to this? Soil engineer, soil evaluator, whatever, that we just use the consistent phrase, consistent phrase?
But Jeff, is that your concern that we say site engineer in one place and soil engineer in another place?
Yeah, it's somewhere else in the ordinance where it says site, that's why.
Yeah, what is it? What I prefer.
I think soil, I, I don't know with site engineers, I think soil engineers are the one that.
Soil engineer and soil evaluator, engineer?
Soil and, soil and evaluator.
I do, I, I feel like the state law said site engineer, that's what, that's what brought that in my head, but I don't have that mark, is that? Hold on a second.
Jeff, one?
I think, I think as long as we're consistent in our, in our ordinance, I think.
You guys want soil evaluator or soil engineer?
Why don't we just say we want it to sync up with whatever it says in the state law?
Okay.
Everywhere it says is referring to this individual, whatever it says in the state law, is what we say in our ordinance, so we're.
Right.
And line thirty is not just being nifty, I just didn't like the wording, the wording when doing an ADU in shoreline zone areas, like, since I'm a professional, to me, um, I thought like shoreline zoning standards shall be adhered to, but that's just nothing, that's substantial. Um, then we, the next page that I had.
I think the next applicable thing is we've got definition updates for accessory dwelling unit and affordable housing.
This is the definitions, one forty dash nine.
That's what I, um, on that page, um, forty, line forty?
Yep.
Um, I don't feel like three is needed anymore, um, because it's addressed earlier. We're saying that fifty-one percent or more of the development, so by saying that a majority means more than half, it's kind of putting two different definitions into it. Cause more than half is fifty point one, and fifty-one percent is what is called out earlier in the, in it. So I just think that, that line forty doesn't need to be there.
I don't even see the word majority anywhere, anyways.
For purposes of this definition, majority means more than half?
Yeah.
Yeah, but like a.
Correct, it was taken out.
Yeah, so we should take that out, yeah. Yeah.
If you look online, um, fifty-two, if you're there yet. Something didn't spell wrong. A little kind of event.
Underlined on mine in red, so I knew that, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, don't worry, this stuff is, this stuff is kind of brutal, it's good to have many eyes on it. Okay.
The joke one pages in mind from where I'm at, unless you guys have anything to say.
Um, affordable housing confidence, I can only update is just that spelling error, yes, okay. Okay, and then our next definition that's applicable is base density. Any questions on that one? I'm just rolling through this packet and basically finding what is marked, it's like edited, so we can, okay. Base density, questions, comments? Ricky? Um, designated growth area, this is a new definition.
So, where I'm at, that, um, is, I, it's very, in working with the comprehensive plan, you know, this says that we have that designated growth area is in the comprehensive plan of the town. Technically, I feel like SMPDC has told us that we technically don't have one because it's outdated. And so I'm wondering if, what that does, and also, where is that designated growth area? Cause I'm not sure that the comprehensive plan committee and then us are clearly identifying that designated area, and I'm not sure. We're calling it out here, but is it getting identified, you know, where it needs to be identified?
Greg would like to speak.
What's that?
Go ahead, Greg, to speak. Thanks for keeping on.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're adding that because it is stipulating, the law is stipulating that certain types of development, the affordable housing aspect can only be done in the designated growth area. So that needs to be added in here because we don't technically define the designated growth area. And again, it's a two-part process. You're saying you have the designated growth area here, but it's further designed, uh, defined within the comp plan. So the comp plan has yet to be finalized. So by default, when that's finalized, that will give structure to that definition.
Excellent, thank you, so in theory, we need to be making, also making sure that the comp plan is clearly defining that.
Yes, you have to be, the comp plan needs to be certified.
And certified, correct.
Yeah, as part of the comp plan process, I have to have the discussion about what, where the designated growth area would be.
Not at this point, we're working on housing and use chapter stats.
Okay. But I, but I would imagine it's part, like, no, we'll get to it, yeah, okay, great. Okay.
That was all, I, I saw the footprints, you know, you know, we haven't reached them.
Okay. Okay. This packet's a little deceiving.
I'm at, I'm at one forty, forty seven.
Yep, one forty, forty seven, and residential development, cluster development. Two to four residential units. So this is that residential dwelling unit. That's bucket number two of. And this whole packet, this has been. Is this new, brand new or nothing?
No.
It's just allowing for those in that section. Don't move here, John.
Oh, I'll move it. I just gotta wait three years.
Okay, so on one forty dash forty seven, we're adding that phrase, two to four residential units on a single parcel. And then that is subject to. The minimal dimensional requirements on, just ahead of line eighty three. Right? It's like depending on the size of your property and your front end and all your measurements.
You still did, you have something here to everything in that section.
Yep.
Just allowing for more than a single family house.
Any questions on that section, one forty dash forty seven?
I have one. Yeah, like, so on line one forty seven, it's talking about like two off-street parking spaces for every three units. So parking is not, can you just talk about the, in the three buckets of A D U are residential, two to fours, and then four for housing? Which ones have parking?
Only the A D U is not, is that required official public? Right? The other one?
No, that's not right.
That's not right?
Nope. So.
I'll shut up.
You get to the parking. So if you go to, we're getting there. Do you want to wait or do you want to go now? So if you guys flip one, two, three, four pages after table P. You're gonna see the residential parking standards. Is there a line number on that? Uh, so it's one forty, that's twenty five, and there are nine. The page looks like this. I got, I got. And it spells exactly out exactly what to do for parking. So if you go to the bottom of this. So there's no additional parking required for. So back up just for one second, because A D Us right now, you don't need an extra parking space anyways, so.
Right, they didn't change it.
Right.
I just want to clarify that.
Good point.
Okay. So basically, in summary, from a parking perspective, the A D Us that everyone gets essentially by right. There's no additional parking requirement. And then if I go down this path of building two to four other units on my property, I still am not required to write any parking. It spells it out right here exactly how much parking you need to require for that.
It is.
And if you go down here, it will tell you exactly how much affordable housing parking and it's a percentage, it's sixty six percent per unit. Okay. Or, yeah. So for the accessory dwelling units, no space are required, required, but once I start to dip into the additional, two to four, there is parking. That's right. Got it, okay.
That on one forty five, at the start of that area, the affordable housing provision. I just noticed there was a tone change. Where it reads almost like it's not South Burick's ordinance. Says a municipality shall allow a municipality, a, it's our municipality. So shouldn't we change it to the municipality or the town or should we adjust that wording?
So I just want to tell you what happened on this page. I, you can do whatever you'd like. These, these things on this page were directly taken from the state. So they were literally pretty much copy and pasted from the state into this document. So if you want to update that, that's fine. But this is exactly how the state has it. That's why it's like that.
Yeah, absolutely. That's why I was saying the tone sort of changed to, it did seem very statey that like not. But where it's ours, in my mind, I just figured it should be reading as the town. You know what I mean? It would still be the same. Not sure if it changes it.
You're essentially just saying like in places where.
Well, I mean, if I'm, if I want density requirements and I'm coming to South Burick. All I need is a municipality to show, to allow, like we're South Burick, we need South Burick to allow.
Okay, so what you're looking for is the municipality instead of a municipality. In this section.
It, yes, that, that's all, yeah.
Okay. Can we just switch on that page for any of the copies of these states stuff?
Yeah.
Okay.
That makes sense, right?
Yep.
It's only a couple of times right in that area, Jenny, that I saw it.
Because it's copied. But yeah, no problem.
And then the next. Down on one sixty nine and one seventy one, they both basically say the same thing, right? The owner of the portable housing development shall provide in writing adequate portable water. I feel like it needs to say shall provide proof or of, shall provide proof in writing. Or should, it should say shall provide in writing evidence of adequate. You see what I mean? See the wording?
You're worried that they think you should have to bring the bucket of water?
Exactly, yeah.
You are a wordsmith, Jim. Basically done.
So you wanted to prove, provide in writing?
And I think that could be the same for one seventy one. That same proof of writing. Cause that seems like the gist of it. You're just, we're looking at the proof of writing that has been done, you know? The next one I had was on the next page. Well, line one eighty nine. No, one ninety. This is one that Jeff usually jumps on and spelling out the acronyms. I would.
So what do you want to do? Spell out subsurface wastewater disposal system?
Yeah.
That's what, I didn't, I didn't know what, I forgot what.
No worries.
The acronym would be.
So you want to change site evaluator on one ninety two? Eric two.
That was, I saw it in another area, it was different, so what I just.
Whatever a state says, whatever the phrase is. Then table B. On table B.
I just had a question on table B. So then reading it correctly. Single family, two to four family, multi-family and carnivate, they're all blank because. They are hinged off of the whether it's on sewer or not on sewer, correct? Am I reading that correctly?
So wait, so ask that question over time, say it again.
So you see the table?
Yep.
The, the big blank of, in the, at the top or upper part of that, the big blank for single family, two to four family, you see that right there?
If there is blank all the way across the upper B R?
Right. If, if, if the number that I would use, if I had a single family in R one, it would, if I were on sewer, it would, or without sewer, it would be forty thousand, correct? I reference that number. Okay, that's all. I just, I was reading through it and I wasn't sure, I just thought like.
Oh, it like carries down.
Right.
So what happens is anytime you have a unit, so if I have a duplex or if I have a three-unit apartment building. The dimension requirement for those units is whatever that dimension requirement is that zone. So if it's twenty thousand. Square feet per unit, then it's sixty thousand square feet for a three-unit building. That's why it looks like that.
Yeah, I'll carry that. That, I was just.
That's a per unit amount.
Yep, that's exactly right. Would it be worth just like putting, bringing the numbers down just so it's clear?
Well, two to four, that was a spread, so you couldn't, without putting.
So that would come to be like twenty thousand to forty thousand, right?
We, I mean, we can do a range if you guys want, we can definitely do that. But it, there's two different ranges that would be in there.
I think.
With sewer without.
Yeah.
That whole table would need to be updated. We can do it if you want to. It will, we just have to do the math and add it all in, the double lines.
I think so is the, the line twenty, where two to four single family dwelling proposed lot, that the parents will double. Per dwelling, that's where I'm, like, that line is what's telling me what number would actually be here in that situation.
Sort of, but sort of not, so.
Yeah, like, it's not obvious, I guess it's not obvious to me like what, what the math is by looking at this table. I mean, it's.
You get a note, then just says per unit and then.
Residential minimum lot size per unit.
Sure.
At the top.
Yeah. Cause it's one unit is forty thousand. If you had two units, depending on which zone you're in, it would be like R one. It would be eighty thousand, and then three units would be sixteen, then so forth, right? Or sorry. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
But it changes for each zone, so you could just say per unit and then.
Yeah, I think if we could add per unit to the, where it says residential minimum lot size per unit, square feet, and then it references note twenty.
Two and per unit, okay.
Yeah, that's in the top section. Thank you. Yo. But yeah. Any other table B stuff? So we talked about parking. Is everyone understanding what the parking situation is? Okay. And then first, and then we have table A changes. That's pretty much it. So on table A, we have a new use, which is portable housing development. And then. Did, did you guys make changes to like dormitory or residence hall that are, those are now major site plan as part of this?
No, I think it's just the note, um, just the note, stuck in it.
Oh, okay.
Numbering of the notes changed.
Yep. Okay, okay. So if I look at like the second page of table A, all those edits are just sort of like done now.
Yeah, can I, can I just point out that the number ten note for affordable housing is really specific to L D two thousand and three. It's not as if you can't put affordable housing in other parts of town. It's that the bonus, the density bonus and the growth area restrictions are only. In the table referred to around L D two thousand and three, but present.
It just means that it's specific to that. That's all that means, and it redefines the. Catch that.
Yep.
Um, that was my last note was that I think that it should not be referenced as L D two thousand and three. It shouldn't, you know, the law. Because L D two thousand and three will be a new thing.
That's, we can do that.
Yeah.
Jenny, that was in the memo that went over to the council.
Yeah, they have the memo on the front of their, uh, book that they're looking at, so.
Yep.
Should be public law six seventy two.
Oh, yeah, there it is.
Oh, yeah, here we go.
It's down to number three with the modifications.
Yep. Okay. What else you got, anything?
That's what I was, you were searching for.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Um, so on the very last page, that table that is on here. R S should most likely be R five.
So. That is not a change, so that's currently in our ordinance.
But it's, it's not something we changed, it's been in there for.
Well, I couldn't possibly, that I wasn't around that.
Jeff, if you have time, go through the whole written support section.
And then I just, I, the question I wanted, I was thinking, I was thinking that this was table B one, like I was saying earlier. So I didn't know what table this was. As far as the reference for me. And then my question is, should we be calling out all of the other zones that we have? Or is it okay that we? There, you know, we have R one A, R two A, I one, I two. That. Could be put in here with the potential of. Changing I one, I two districts, things like that, and residential being involved in there. I'm not sure how that will impact it. We'll have to come back to it.
Where is this table referenced? This table on the last page, is this referenced in any of the work that was, that you guys did as part of?
The only thing that's changed in this table that you're looking at is under one on the bottom.
Yep.
We literally added dash four. But then, cause it already said two, so we added four.
Okay.
Yep.
What is this table?
What you're probably saying is, these were probably like zones before, and when they updated to R one A and R two, whatever. They probably just didn't update this in the ordinance. So we can definitely do that if you want. It's an easy fix. It probably just never got added.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying you guys missed or did anything, it's just things that I taught, so.
Oh, no, it's a good catch.
And that's why I'm saying, do we, should we, should we put them in now, even if it's a. Not, not applicable, at least. At least they're in there, right?
If you guys want to, I don't see why we wouldn't. We're already changing the document anyways. We might as well just update it while we're here.
Sure.
One less thing later.
So we want to. For the zones that have kind of become. Multiple zones like R one, A, and whatever else. Those are a little more obvious where we would just list those out at the top for I one and I two.
Well, residential isn't allowed in one of them, so even if we might have contemplated.
Yeah. Yeah.
We'd have to wait for a change if you wanted to.
What we could do, Mallory, is add the applicable zones that we should be adding, if there's any will add them.
Cool. Anything else? Anyone else got any question?
Look at that.
Alright, so it, it sounds like the, of the changes that's been through, I, it doesn't, I don't think any of them are super sensitive at all. They're just like kind of word changes and stuff. So if we can get those changes pushed through, then probably at our next council meeting, which is not for a couple of weeks now. We should be able to. Well, remind, sorry, remind me of the process. Do we, do we have a public hearing?
Yeah, you gotta vote to make it a draft document, set a public hearing.
And then we have.
Then, then you post that document to, to the public.
Yep.
Little public hearing and then he's gonna approve it after public hearing.
Okay, so we should be able to, we should be able to at our next meeting. I guess this is a question, there's any, given them the changes, do you think we'd be able to have this button up for our next council meeting, which is like two or three weeks away?
Yep, so we have L J, uh, Lee J doing all the changes himself.
Okay.
When we submit them to him, he's been getting back to us for then twenty-four hours. I'm not saying he will this time, but he has in the past.
Okay.
I'll submit them to him tomorrow and hopefully we'll have a clean document by Monday.
Oh, perfect, okay. And then at our next council meeting, we can adopt the document, we can set a little public hearing. And we'll, we should be on track for the timeline maybe to meet.
Yeah, December thirty first.
Yep, yeah, that should give us plenty of time. End of October. Any other concerns?
For our next, that'll be. November fourteen, yeah.
Oh, that's so far away.
Yeah, cause we're skipping, yeah.
Is it a full of them at the next, next council meeting for this?
Seventh, uh, Wednesday.
Do you guys think that Jenny needs to join us at our next council meeting? It's like if we get all the edits that we talked about adopted into this document, do we need her or Lee J at the next council meeting?
I, I would love to have you there. It wouldn't impose on you too much.
If you would just like zoom in or whatever, just.
So, so I would rather have you here in person. I hate to, but I would rather have you here in person.
Zoom at my house, can be tough. Uh, November fourteen. Yeah, well, we can, um, move that order of business up in the meeting, so you can get out of here.
I don't dare.
When's the drop dead date on this lovely state law?
December thirty first.
Okay, so we'll be voting on this the way it lays out. The first meeting in December.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Last chance, anyone? Plenty more, thanks for joining us. Thank you for all of your hard work on this. I feel like I'm good too. Thank you, Greg.
Have a good evening.